Good evening and welcome to the April 23 Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Commissioner Narenberg.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Fang.
President.
Commissioner Caliano.
Here.
Commissioner Gorman.
Here.
Chairman Leo.
President. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 19?
So moved.
Dr.?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have two items, 28 Columbus Avenue and 269 Columbus Avenue. 20 Columbus Avenue, please step up.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Faustini. I'm presenting the application for 228 Columbus Avenue. We presented this application last year from the winter of 2013 to the spring of 2013, and we received the approvals last May. We've started to make some improvements to the site, but we're here tonight to present a change to our original design. Not sure, at some point, we'll switch over to show you the design, but in any event, the site consists of three buildings. We call them Building A, B, and C. And Building C is the small building closest to Columbus Avenue, and that, I'm sure you all know, last year, it was a vacant space, but it's now occupied and it's a frozen yogurt shop. We did some minor exterior improvements to the roof, and we added fenestration on the Columbus Avenue side. So that building now is no longer part of the scope of work because the work was completed last year. The other two parts of the building are Building B and Building A. Building B consists of a covered walkway area, which is still in the scope of work, and Building A is the facade that faces the plaza of the site. Our major change, or our change at this point, would be the plaza that faces, I'm sorry, the facade that faces the plaza on Columbus Avenue. The tower, as you recall, is still in the work. We're not changing the tower at all. And when we switch over to the plaza plan, you'll see, we originally had a stair at the corner, and we've taken that out of the scope of work due to safety concerns. And there is a planter there now, so the intent is really just to add the plantings we had proposed last year in that area.
Okay.
Should we switch over to?
Yeah, just if you can switch over to the plans.
I'm sure.
Can we switch over to the plans? I'm not sure how that works. There we go, okay.
So I'm going to zoom in here on the site. As I was mentioning, we have three buildings here. We have Building A. We have, Building A is the larger building. We have Building B here, and Building C. Building C is what we know as the frozen yogurt shop now. That building, the work was completed last summer, so it's no longer part of the scope of work. Building B and Building A have an existing covered walkway between them. The intent of this project is to raise that covered walkway and to rebuild it. That is still in the scope of work. And the major change that we're discussing tonight is this facade along Building A. It's from the corner of Main Street towards Underhill Street, but it's basically where the mouse is scrolling over here. That's Building A's facade. We have the tower here on the corner, which I'll show you shortly in the front elevation. That's still in the scope of work. And the other revision is this corner here. Last year, we had proposed a circular stair at the corner. Now, we are actually looking to just keep it as a planter area as it currently is. There is a four-foot-high wall that surrounds it on two sides, where the intent is to lower that wall to 18 inches high, so it provides some seating area for the plaza. I will now go over to the elevations. So this is a partial elevation of Building A. Last year, when we had originally proposed this elevation, we had the tower, which you see here in the corner, and we also had articulated the front facade here. The intent now is to reduce the scope of work by value engineering the design and also keeping the existing canopy that runs along Building A. But we'd like to dress up that canopy with a short knee wall for signage and a shed roof, which basically will span from the front of the canopy to the existing parapet wall. If you want to see it in elevation on the side, we have basically this type of section cut, where this column is the existing column that supports the canopies, and there's an existing flat roof over it. What we'd like to do is add a short knee wall, it's about three feet high, for signage, and then a shed roof, which will span from the front of the canopy to the existing parapet wall. The rest of the plaza would receive the same roof finishing that Building B has received. It's that metal standing seam roof. And I'll just go through a couple of the other exterior views. This is an entire view along Building A and cutting through the covered walkway area. This is Building B's facade on Columbus Avenue. We've maintained the trellis features that we had added last year to help decorate some of the bare walls. So they're identical to our application last year. And where we've decided to omit the circular stair that I was discussing earlier, we've tried to incorporate some more plantings. I have a list of plants that we're proposing for that area. These are just generic plants for CAD purposes. At the board's recommendation, we've also included a landscape fence, a short 18-inch to two-foot-high wrought iron landscape fence at the corner. And let me zoom out again. This is an entire view along Columbus Street, where we have the planter, the open plaza, Building C, which was completed last year, and then Building B, which is at the corner of Columbus and Underhill Street. And, let's see. This is the view from Underhill Street, directly opposite the parking area. We've raised the existing covered walkway area, and we've provided a new facade here. And then the existing roofs are just being refinished with the metal standing seam roof. And then this is the view on the plaza looking towards Underhill Street, as I showed, when I was showing the section profile of the new roof. And this is the view from Main Street looking north. So we have, again, the trellises that we had proposed last year to cover up some of the bare brick walls, the existing, the proposed tower, which remains unchanged from last year's application, and then just the canopy roof covering as viewed from Main Street. So again, this is the existing canopy. We're looking to refinish the facades of the canopy for signage, and also to provide a new shed roof that'll connect the front of the canopy to the existing parapet. And then we would also provide column surrounds around the existing bare tube steel that's there now, and build a pedestal base to help dress up the canopy's appearance. These are the plantings that we were proposing last year. Again, they're still in the scope of work, it's just, we're now just proposing them for the existing planter area as opposed to the previously proposed planting area. So we're proposing a Kusa dogwood for the center of that planter area. We have American boxwoods also, knockout roses, again, around the dogwood, Willow cotton easter, quickfire hydrangea, and Olga rhododendron. And then, again, last year, I had a problem pronouncing this one, but it's Emerald Gaddy Unamis. So again, it's the same planting selections as last year, just in a different location at the corner, as opposed to wrapping around the stair that we were proposing last year. Just, that's our application for this evening.
What material is going to be the signage band?
Stucco.
Stucco, still stucco?
Yes. It's the same stucco we're proposing last year, it's a Perrex buckskin stucco. It's the same as what we were proposing last year.
Okay. It looks like, from the rendering, from the elevations, that on that signage band, like, you now have, do you have, like, inset sort of framed out for each little storefront?
Yes, we do. We, last year, we had proposed, I'm sorry, last, during the work session, we had proposed a continuous band, but we've since revisited it and provided just blocks of frontage for each store. And we've provided a relief, basically, or an inset panel for the signage.
Okay. But it will all be the same material and color of stucco?
Yes.
Okay.
The signage itself would be, probably, would likely be different, and that would provide some variety in the facade.
And this still has to go to the sign and wanting, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes. Can you explain a little about the issue behind why you went away from the steps at the corner?
We were, the owner of the property advised us that there was three traffic incidents last year, and I believe one, if not all, of the cars wound up in that planting area, where we were originally proposing stairs. So it became a safety concern for the owner, and he had preferred just to keep that area as a planting area, as opposed to steps for patrons to dine or to sit at. So we, at the board's request, we've also incorporated a wrought iron fence, a landscaping fence, to help deter any other, to help deter traffic or anyone from going into that planter area for safety reasons.
Is this something that we've been able to?
Excuse me, is this something that we were able to confirm in terms of what?
I believe Mr. Williams, we spoke to Mr. Williams, and he's.
There are incidents that the cars actually jumped the curb at that area? So wouldn't pedestrians also be in danger at that point?
Of course, yeah.
So, I mean, I think it's a bigger issue. I just, I'm disappointed because I think, I actually have to think this is the most important corner in the whole village, not to overstate it, but it can't really be underestimated. This is like Maine and Maine. It's at the entrance to the village and so forth, and to open the mall up at that corner was a really key gesture, and it's a wonderful thing that was part of the original submittal. And to eliminate it is, you know, it's a big disappointment, and I'm wondering whether it's a bigger issue, that if we have these cars jumping curbs there, then everybody's in danger, right? Not just, you know, these steps, which will be used on less frequent occasion than people using the crosswalks. So I'm, I guess I'd like to refer this back to the Village Board, that we can investigate this, because then we have much bigger problems, I think, than, you know, a set of steps, number one. Number two is, if we have to omit this, then it's still the most important corner in the village. Opening it up is still very, very important. Lowering the height of the walls goes a little bit of a ways there. It's not, it's, you know, I think that you recognize, as the designer, the great improvement that sort of opened up in making that gesture. I think you called it sort of a grand steps or something like that. So I think lowering the height of the walls, that's a step in the right direction. The planting becomes that much more important, however. I'm wondering if, now that we opened this up, if we're planting taller trees that'll block the view, if that's the right thing? And, you know, I think it has to be absolutely ornamental, it has to be good all year round, maybe it has to change, you know, during different parts of the year because it is so important. I mean, this is literally the front door to the whole village, so, again, not to overstate it, but I'm wondering about the, you know, the wisdom of putting something that's going to block the view into the mall, which is something that we all wanted to open up. Well, we're looking to plant smaller plantings, so it wouldn't be a large tree. The tree that we're proposing is, I believe, eight to 10 feet tall, and that's just one tree. Yeah. I think the eight to 10 is taller than the sightlines of the average person, so I think you're blocking. So I think that, I would encourage you to, and maybe we can make, put some conditions on a revised planting plan, because you said, you know, same plants, different location. But when you're at a different location, then you're looking at a whole different context and a different design and different functions. So I think it should be something that's lower, that preserves the sightlines in.
Eric, I also recommend at the work session, maybe something lighter and aerial, like a birch, maybe a river birch or a regular birch, because it.
It's low.
Well, but it's light, so that you would be able to see through, and also looks attractive in the winter.
Right.
So that was the only, because I agree with you. I was concerned about blocking, because I also wanted to open that up.
Right. And we, I think that that was the idea behind the steps. You know, it's, again, it's a very huge disappointment that the steps are not part of the project, and I still, and I, again, I think it's part of an issue that the board's got to look at. If we have curbs jumping, probably one of the most frequently used intersections in the village, three times a year, then that's, that's not acceptable, I don't think. Obviously, more that that's above your, you know, area focus, but it still remains an important corner, and if, I guess we're still left with planting, you lowered the walls, that's great. You know, we have some suggestions on how to make that planting more appropriate for what you have now, so.
Okay.
You know, picking up on that, you saying, refer to the Village Board, I would, if we're going to go that route, my thought would be to ask the police department to give us reports, the annual report from last year, if they have any police reports on that, because frankly, it's an act, if those are accidents, as you say they are, they should have records of that. I'd be interested in getting reports from a previous year, just to see if that was atypical or if it's not. The other thought was, the metal on the shed roofs, that's going to be, I believe you said at the work session, it's going to be reused from what currently exists?
The existing framing is to be reused, but the metal finish itself is all new.
It's going to be new, okay.
It's the identical to the metal finish that was used at the smaller building, Building C.
Okay. That's all. As far as the plantings, I would also agree with Commissioner Fang that the obviousness of that corner speaks for itself. I've seen cotone aster at the corner of Grant Street, wither and die in the year that it's been planted. And while I'm not for or against cotone aster, my concern would be that whatever's planted is maintained throughout the year, and that there is some type of foliage throughout the year, as you might expect, you know, the cycle of certain plants are to give blooms at certain times of the year. So that would be really important as well. If we're going to sacrifice those nice entry stairs, then we should have something economically beautiful as well, and not have it fade, literally, in winter. So that would be a hope of mine.
Okay. A couple of questions for you. On the, talking about the corner where the planting area is, you mentioned you were going to lower the existing brick wall to create sort of a seating wall. What is the drop between the top of that proposed seating wall and the planting bed? Is that?
About two feet.
Two feet? And that's, that's okay in terms of, for, you know, safety in terms of sitting on a seating wall?
Generally, 30 inches is the building code requirement to have a guardrail.
Okay.
So if we're below 30 inches, it's fine.
Okay. Second question I had, in the tower, I remember when we were talking about this last year, looking at the lights at the top of that tower, can you describe a little bit about the lighting strategy from within those windows, the top of that tower?
It would be, basically, it would not be a clear glass, it would be a translucent glass, and it'd be backlit in the evenings, just to create, like, somewhat of a beacon effect for those, for that area.
Okay.
It's, it's not a usable space, it's pretty much just for facade and for exterior appearance.
Okay.
One other thing.
One other thing I might suggest, look at for that corner, is perhaps a piece of public art, and not, we're not talking about, you know, Michelangelo's David or anything like that, but just something that's fitting for the village. In other cases, I think we've suggested things that kind of allude back to the history of Tuckahoe, maybe, I think marble has been used in some places. It might be something that's appropriate and makes everything around it, because it's a fairly large planting bed, kind of sit right and feel right. Might be something that you, that you consider. Look into it. Yes.
Maybe we should have a contest, have people in the village suggest some type of public art, a sculpture, whatever.
Yeah.
I realize that's not your Bailey work, I'm literally throwing it out here. So, there it is.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I'm clear.
Okay. I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as submitted, with the exception of this corner. We'd like for you to come back.
Do you want to have a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here this evening to speak on this project? Since there is no one present, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay. Can I have a motion for secret, negative decoration?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as submitted, with the exception of the corner of Columbus Avenue and Main Street. I'd like for you to come back with a new strategy, given the comments provided by the commissioners. Anything else we should add, someone?
You just, I would just add to that, that approval is granted tonight on the condition that the applicant return.
Correct.
With a plan acceptable to the planning board, and that in the event the applicant does not return in a timely manner, the approval granted tonight will be deemed null and void.
And do we provide a time limit on that?
It's at the next meeting.
All right.
Put a 30-day.
Is that fair?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll do it.
Before, before we, do we want to build in review and/or some kind of approval by the police department and/or the village board?
Well, I think, I think we don't have to build any approval, the planning board, it's all initiative through the building department, can refer the entire application to the police department, and we should have those responses before the applicant returns at the next meeting.
All right.
So we, you could, after we're done, we'll just ask the building department.
Okay.
And the focus of the next meeting would be just on the planting area itself?
Just on the planting area, correct. All right. They'll come back with some strategies, be it planting, be it, you know, sculpture or whatever.
Okay.
All right? Can I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, take.
Commissioner Narenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Narenberg.
Commissioner Miller?
Four.
Wait, wait, Commissioner Narenberg. I, oh, I'm sorry.
Four.
Commissioner Miller?
Four.
Commissioner Fang?
Four.
Commissioner Caliano?
Four.
Commissioner Gorman?
Four.
Chairman Leo?
Four. All right, so we'll see you at the next work session?
Yes.
And then at the next planning board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thanks for being our Guinea pig.
Yes, 30 days.
Why next to?
Touch what? I know. No.
Yeah.
I don't know. 269 Columbus Avenue?
My name is Michael D'Ambrosio. I'm an attorney here in Scarsdale. To my right is my client, Milica Botez. She's a resident of Tuckahoe, and she's the president of La Plumeage Inc. That's a corporation that, like I said, she's the president of, and she proposes to have a hair salon installed at premises 269 Columbus Avenue here in Tuckahoe. The landlord of the premises is here, we're negotiating a lease for the, for the occupancy of the hair salon. It's a six-station hair salon that fronts Columbus Avenue. That's the extent of the proposal. I have plans, if you want to look at it, architectural plans. Would you?
Are these the same plans?
Oh, yes, you have them, okay. Very good, thank you.
I guess the question is, the current use of this space is?
There's no current use of the space.
So this is a new install, totally new installation?
Totally new installation.
Other than an existing toilet, everything else exists there? It's an open space?
It's, well.
Is this just a flower shop?
Yes. It was a flower shop at one time, but it's empty, it hasn't.
Right, yeah, I think we realized that, we just wondering if it was something else that we were just trying to, you know, put our finger on, a flower shop. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're going to have six chairs, a little reception area, it looks like?
That's correct.
You have some, some washing stations, hair washing stations?
It's about, approximately six stations.
Right.
There'll be a washer and dryer, right?
Okay.
Stacked washer and dryer. The bathroom's in the rear.
How many employees would you expect to have?
Well, I would, well, Ms. Botez?
Yes, I'm Milica Botez, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm, we'll be specializing in hair color. I lived here for 20 years, and my specialty is hair color. I'll be my assistants and two hairdresser assistants of mine.
Okay. What do the hours of operation you expect to have?
It's going to be strictly by appointment only.
Really?
No walk-ins, it's very private. I've been in this community for 20 years. I work in Manhattan, and I've been working for 19 years at the Westchester, and it's going to be very private.
So with that, it sounds like you have an existing client?
Yes, I do.
All right. I understand now it's by appointment?
Yes.
Your mic.
Your mic.
Low. Lower.
The, okay, sorry. The hours are going to be by appointment only, so, starting from 11 to 4, 11 to 5, it's just going to be exclusive, I have an exclusive clientele, and it's going to be high-end.
So you, it sounds generally like late morning to just before people start coming home from work. I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Like, I would say like 11 to 5, or, you know.
How much you're going, would you expect to be open on a Saturday and a Sunday as well, or not?
According to appointments, I have some clients that fly in, and I like to have the, you know, ability to, I live in one block away.
I understand. There may be some concerns about having business on Sunday. I don't know if we do have concerns or not, but as you might suspect, typically, you don't have a business open on Sunday, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. If I have some clients that need to come in, as I said before, I have an exclusive clientele, and sometimes I would have to be there on Sunday.
All right, but is that?
Yeah, it's like one or two.
I was going to say, it sounds pretty random.
Well, it's by appointment. It's by appointment, so I don't expect, you know, 20 people to happen at one time.
I don't expect that either.
Right, right.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, how many appointments on average do you seem to have about, per week or per month?
I would say, well, per week, it can, and I, when I have some stylists, it could be maybe 20 to 30.
Okay. So that's over the range of the entire week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have parking concerns here? Parking question?
Existence structure, I don't, yeah. It's a non-conform, right?
I have some clients that'll come up from, to the train station in Manhattan, and I have a huge Scarsdale, so they can take the train, that's what's very appealing about the location, and I myself will walk.
Right.
Yeah, there's parking.
There's parking, there's probably parking, there's plenty of parking in the area.
Parking in a lot adjacent, I realize that, but you're expecting to utilize that where you need to use that, when you need to use that?
Which parking, I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's a little lot adjacent to the building.
Right.
I think you're entitled to use that, I don't recall what those.
Personally, you mean, or?
Customers, well, it's a public lot, so anyone can use it, it's a street, there's no seat parking.
I know.
There will be a couple of spaces available for.
Wasn't he the doctor?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, in that lot, that it's dedicated somewhat, at least, to the businesses on that side of the street.
Right.
Because I know you're there, so.
Right.
Okay, just trying to get an idea of the comings and goings, because.
Well, it will be very controlled.
It's a little different than the flower shop, obviously.
Yes. As I said before, the clients will be booked every hour, hour and a half. It's a specialty, hair color specialty, so they'll be with me a couple hours, and my assistant stylist will, you know, finish their blow dry, and life goes on.
Sounds good, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? It looks like all the work proposed is interior renovation?
That's correct.
Okay. And exterior signage, will there be signage changes and?
Nope, there'll be some signage, right?
Not too much, as I said before, I want to keep it somewhat private, very minimal.
But if there's any signage, you'll have to go in front of the signage board.
Okay.
Okay. And I guess the other question is, I guess, once you got approval, you'll just have a full set of documents, construction documents, prepared for the building inspector, so he can approve the project. Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, let me just, let me just nail it down. You're not doing anything to the exterior, the front of the.
Well, if anything, I want to.
Other than the signage.
Yeah, but the window, I'm going to frost it, so people cannot see in.
I see.
My clients don't want to be seen in a fishbowl uncompromised situation.
Okay.
Very personal, you know, when you're.
Yeah, I do know.
Yes.
Thank you. The door, will the door remain the same, now that you're telling me that?
Yes, yes, I may have, we're still, not sure what we're going to do, my name on it, some sort of a sign that I'm there, that, you know, that, as I said before, it's not going to be.
I believe it's a glass panel door?
Yes, yes.
And I suspect having, if you're going to frost the window, you're probably going to frost the door?
Yes, we're still deciding, you know, as I said before, it's going to be very minimal, very minimal, maybe just a logo, or.
My name's Dr. Damian Kim, I have the acupuncture clinic over on Columbus Avenue, on the same block, basically, where the beauty salon is. There's a pre-existing awning there, that the flower shop had, and what we're planning to do is keep the color the same, which is basically a hunter green, the same as the signage in my office as well.
Right.
We were going to just basically clean it up and maybe repaint the fabric with no wording or anything, or anything like that.
I see, okay, so you're expecting to stick with the same color scheme, it sounds like?
Yes, man.
All right.
Just to complement the whole block, just keep it uniform.
I see, thank you.
I don't have any issue with random, or any issue with parking, or any issue with what you're doing in the interior. The issue that I do have is that it does not appear to, because it's occupying storefront on a public street, in a prominent location, that we not appear, that it's vacant, boarded up, sort of, if it's, the concern is about the, you know, an opaque, you know, treatment for the entire storefront, it might give off a certain impression, and the only issue, as far as I'm concerned, that we should be interested in is really what kind of appearance that it's giving off on the sidewalk to the public. That's really our main point of business here, and so I think that we want to see what kind of treatment you have on that storefront. The other thing is by having no sign on the awning, same, same kind of issue, which is that we don't want to make it look like this, we have a, you know, a dead, it's wonderful that you're coming in, and it sounds like a very, you know, a very high-end and quality business, but, and service that you're providing, but just, we want to project the image of quality and somewhat, you know, some vitality, even though I understand it's a very limited clientele, but if somehow we cannot be, if we avoid projecting a sense of...
Vacancy.
Yes, vacancy, and, you know, we're closed, the village is closed for business, so we would like to see what kind of treatment that you're proposing.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with a logo, I mean, there'll be some, something.
Yeah, and some way that we could see through without compromising the privacy and so forth, and some identity even, and I know that's the purview of the signage board, but I'm just telling you what our concerns are, so very, very limited, but...
What I was suggesting for the front of the, the window area was not a completely, let me see, we're going to, as a symbol, basically it has where you can actually...
Well, I think that's the issue, I think you're verbalizing what you're planning to place, but we'd like to see what you're doing.
It's not to the point where you actually can't see through. You will see people actually moving around behind the opacity of the glass.
Can't see their faces and identities, which is fine.
Well, you won't be able to specifically say, okay, that's John Dick Hair.
Right, right, right. No, no, understood, but it's just the impression, and so, as, you know, Commissioner Lee was saying, that we just need to see what that, what that actually looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, before we go with the, whatever symbol on, the signage on the window, we'll, of course, we're going to bring that to the board, basically.
Okay, I guess, again, I don't think we have any, I speak for myself, I don't think we have any issues with your application, I think it's fine, I think the only concern we have is the application of a film on glass. If you, you know, we'd like to see what that is, so, I mean, if we can, if you want, we can do a conditional approval this evening, and then you can, once you have decided what the film is going to be, you can come back and present it to us, and we'll call it a day.
30 days, yeah.
Again, we could do 30 days, like we did the previous applicant, if you come back in 30 days with some sort of an image, diagram, samples, that we can get a sense of what you're planning to do. Now, keep in mind, the other option as well, if you want to consider, is if you're applying to the glass, it's our purview. If you do something on the interior side, such as a curtain or something like that, I don't think we can, we can say anything about that, so you...
So long as it's not on the glass.
I think so, correct?
Oh.
Can I be further?
Well, then, if we put a curtain up, then it would completely block...
Again, I'd rather you didn't do that, I'd rather you did something, you know...
Window treatments.
Correct, do something, again, and again, you don't want to have the appearance of, you know, what's going on behind that window, people, you know, it...
The only thing is that because it's high-end, they don't want, my client doesn't want to attract...
Understood.
No question, we agree with you, and that's fine, there's ways of doing a film application where, you know, for example, there's, you know, a little, images or your logo, or, you know, you only see a small portion of what's going on in there.
Right, three quarters of the way up, or something like that, where you get the idea of occupancy, but you're not compromising your clientele.
So we're going to actually see silhouettes of people moving around.
Correct, yeah, that's, yeah, something's going...
Actually, that's the type of, it's more of like a, signage companies will put a light frost on it.
Correct, it's a 3M film that...
So it actually could be a circular emblem of the size of the village of Tuckahoe?
Okay.
It's basically, it's like a wrought iron picture of clear holes.
If you could have an image with some samples brought out that's...
That's very, very accurate, that would be very good.
I lost it on the computer, I just crashed, and I might find it.
Okay.
Then maybe a photo of the storefront itself within the, from the view of a passerby, so we could see how it would work in that...
You're going to have to engage a signage contractor to do this work for you, and what they generally do, they'll provide you with a photographic image, they'll take a photograph of your storefront, apply, you know, a, an image onto the photograph, and to get a sense of what it's going to look like, so it's done all the time, so if you, if you engage one, they'll, I mean, they can prepare one for you fairly quickly.
Very good.
All right.
30 days.
Is that okay?
That'd be fine, um, will this hinder us in proceedings?
No, no, we're going to give you conditional approval, I'm going to suggest we provide